All right, good evening everyone. It's 6:00 PM on August the 6th. The date time of this meeting of Cleveland County Board of Commissioners this time. I'll call the board to order. Madam Clerk, can we have a form?
Yes, sir, we have a form.
Next item is a pledge of allegiance and invocation, which I'll ask Jason Pauls to lead us in. Jason.
Please join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll please join me in praying. Dear God, in this time of, where you see the news all the time and you see turmoil and trouble and pain throughout the world, God, these things come home to us quite often. And right now, we just ask for your hand of, your hand of grace, your hand of peace upon this room, upon those people that are here and those people that are not present with us tonight. God, we just ask for your guidance in this meeting. Give those that are speaking wisdom and give them clarity of mind to do the best thing for our communities. We ask these things in their name. Say it again.
Amen.
Next, we'll take a moment to recognize any elected officials present.
That's be hard if registered.
Next, we'll recognize any veterans. Commissioner, quick.
Jason Pauls, United States Air Force.
Frisbee Canine, United States Army.
David Cotton, United States Navy.
Donnie Heth, U.S. Army.
Bobby Dyer, United States Marine Corps.
Has all of you got one of the pens that we give out for attending the meeting? You got one? You got one? You come forth and I'll get you one. There are two. So we need two. I got them right here. A few years ago, we took the county crest and had the crest laid underneath to put rockets that could go at the pursuit of service.
Next, we'll recognize law, any law enforcement present.
Danny House, Sheriff's Office.
Frisbee Canine, Lieutenant, Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, guys. Next, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Sherri Lavender, Texas Department.
Frisbee Canine, Department of State.
Cole Perry, Department of Building Inspection.
Building Maintenance.
Rebecca Thompson, Social Services.
Jason Pauls, Cities Development Director.
Martha Thompson, Legal.
Sandra Orpitt, Range.
Thank you all. Thank you for what you do every day. All right, next, I'm going to read this statement before we get into the agenda. The public hearing is for Planning Case 24-10. This was a request to rezone a portion of a parcel, 48083, from residential neighborhood business, restricted use for telecommunication tower. In Planning Case 24-11, which was a request to rezone parcel 66231 from residential, restricted residential to residential, have been postponed until Tuesday, September 17, 2024, at 6:00 PM here in the Commissioners' chambers. The planning board could not meet and make a recommendation on the two cases due to like requirement at July meeting. So based on that, we're going to delay these. So the planning board has time to hear these cases on August 27, and then we'll move accordingly then again on September 17. So with that, Commissioners, before you, you have our agenda. So this time, I'll seek a motion to adopt the proposed agenda.
Sir, moved.
Second. Any questions or discussion? If I hear none, all the favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? Our motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk.
The public comment portion of a Board of Commissioners meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the Board to do so. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by saying their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation and are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or personal attacks against any person. All comments from the speakers shall be issue-oriented and directly related to the subject that the Commissioners have oversight and authority. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to address the Board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allotted to them to another speaker. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed.
Thank you. Tonight, we have two. First, Robert Williams.
My name is Robert Williams. I live at 814 East States Coast Trail. And it's actually in Fallston, but it's a Landale address. Sorry. I sit right over there and started writing down a few things that I'd like to speak about. One is today's August the 6th. That's anniversary of the first atomic bomb dropped on Hiroshima. Changed the history of warfare from now, from then on, probably a lot of other things, too. And I thought how fitting that was, that statement is, because I think something similar to an atomic bomb is going to be dropped on Cleveland County when the tax bills come out. Hope it don't work out that way. Anyway, also, I went by and paid my taxes yesterday, and I noticed right beside where you walk in the door to pay the taxes, there's a new area there, legal department. And I could see in, I said, hmm, it looked like a big open space. I'm thinking, when did Cleveland County have a legal department? We've had attorneys. And now Martha Thompson has announced herself as the legal. So you must have a big plan to increase whatever the legal department does in Cleveland County. And the only thing I could think of right quick is repossessing houses when you can't pay the taxes. So I hope that's not the case either. Public comment. Phil just read out the rules. They're not complete according to the rules that get passed out, or not passed out, sent out with the advanced agenda. There's a lot of things left out. And one is the part where the Commissioners are not required to answer questions, not required by law to answer questions that's asked, that might be asked during public comment. Well, the other side of that coin is the Commissioners are not required by law to not answer questions. And number one strategic goal of the Cleveland County Commissioners is to encourage citizen engagement. Yet, when citizens come out to speak, you get treated like bad stuff. So anyway, my time's up. Thank you.
Next is Allison Steele. Ms. Steele?
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Cotton and others, my name is Allison Guess Steele. My residence is 1731 Pondale Road. I am here to attempt once again to address the needs of animals in this county. The plight of animals here will never improve unless and until the following issues are acknowledged, addressed, and remedied. I have presented this to some of you before, and as I have waited rather patiently on positive change, conditions for animals continue to erode, and we inexplicably continue to accept that erosion. I have learned that details that were news to me just months ago were actually known by you over a year ago, and it seems with each passing day, I learn more and more disappointing details of how this county ignores the desperation of our animals. So I'm back. Tonight, I'm sharing again the information that is known by many in this community who represent numerous different sectors of this community. The self-employed professionals, the county employees such as yourselves, the true animal advocates such as myself, and Cleveland County pet owners in general. Of those who know what I'm about to share, there are two groups. Those who believe what they see and those who choose not to. Let's allow common sense to prevail. Believe what your eyes tell you. In May of 2023, you were made aware of problematic and unacceptable overreach of one of your own into the intricate business decisions and workings of the Cleveland County Animal Services. I learned that much later, but no matter, it's now confirmed. Aside from this practice being out of line, or worse, according to the duties and responsibilities of a county Commissioner, it is also an extreme conflict of interest in light of this Commissioner's affiliation and heavy involvement with the local dog rescue organization. This inexcusable and excessive encroachment upon the Department of Animal Services has led to an inordinate turnover of employees there, as well as instigated poor decisions in regard to animal welfare. Additionally, this Commissioner has allowed, even overseen, the misuse and/or misappropriation of not only county goods paid for by our hardworking, taxpaying citizens, but also services and equipment, again, bought and paid for by the Cleveland County taxpayer. I, as one of those taxpayers, would suggest that the investigation into this injustice against me and my fellow citizens be enthusiastically pursued until true justice prevails. To recap, one of your own for years has overstepped authority in a myriad of ways and has, to put it kindly, overseen and allowed the misappropriation of goods, services, and equipment belonging to the Cleveland County Animal Services and paid for by us all. It must stop. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Commissioners, you have been presented your consent, the items on the consent agenda in our package, in the packets. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve, as presented. Make a motion and we approve.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hear none, all the favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? Next item, we're on to the regular agenda. At this time, I'll recognize our tax assistant, Sherri Lavender, for the 2025 reappraisal update.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to present to the Board our 2025 reappraisal schedule standards and rules. These sets of schedules and rules are what we will assess by for the upcoming four years beginning January 1, 2025. I'm doing this as a statutoryal requirement under 105317 that says these schedules must be presented to the Board for consideration. And one of the reasons I'm also here tonight is to ask for a public hearing to be set for public input on these same schedules. I've got a quick presentation, and then we'll go through it.
By the way, there you go.
So as most of you know, North Carolina General Statute 105286 requires that all counties conduct a reappraisal of real property at least once every eight years. This statute also allows for the advancement or shortening of the reappraisal cycle to less than eight years if approved. By conducting reappraisals more frequently, the amount of inequity that can incur between different property types is reduced. Sales prices, since our last general reappraisal effective January 1 of 2021, have continued to rise. This graph shows what our median sales price countywide in 2020, just before our last reappraisal, was approximately $103,000. As you can see in our reappraisal, that number stayed rather flat, but beginning in 2022, sales prices started to rise. And the red line represents our sales ratio. What that is, is the relationship between our assessed values and the current market. So since our assessed values have remained the same since 2021, our sales ratio has continued to drop over the years. And you can see that by that red line there. Currently, as of April of this year, our current median sales price is $198,000. So that has increased over these, these years here. That has caused our sales ratio to drop below the required percentage. 105286 requires that we have a median sales ratio to be above 85 or below 115%. And at the end of 2021, our sales ratio was at 98, as seen here. So we were within 2% of market value as of our last reappraisal. But as you can see, that line sharply drops to where we're currently now at a sales ratio of 59%. And we're not the only county that's been hit by this upswing of sales prices since 2021. Of the 100 counties in North Carolina, 64 saw their sales ratio drop below 85% in 2022. 24 of those counties had an acceptable ratio between 86 and 97, and 12 completed reappraisals as of 2022. When our sales ratio dropped below that statutory limit, DOR sent us this letter basically stating that we had to complete a reappraisal no later than January 1 of 2025. To show some regional statistics, I'm showing us, Cleveland County, and our neighboring counties, Burke, Gaston, Lincoln, and Rutherford. In 2022, we were all in the same boat with our sales ratio dropping below that statutory level. So we all received letters that year stating we had to complete a reappraisal. The four counties that surround us completed their reappraisal in 2023, and this was what their sales ratio ended up being at the end of their 2023 reappraisal. As you can see, we continued to drop. As of April of this year, their 2024 sales ratio numbers are continuing to drop. In fact, Burke is in danger of falling below that 85% still, even after completing a reappraisal. So this is not a Cleveland County issue. This is a regional statewide issue. So once we got that letter from DOR, my staff began reviewing properties and analyzing neighborhood characteristics. We've reviewed location, zoning, building type, age, condition, replacement cost, current use, as well as sales of comparable properties. We've done all that to create this schedule that I'm presenting tonight for both market and present use value, and you have copies of these schedules. And we will continue to monitor the market all the way up until that last day of the calendar year prior to our assessment date. So to wrap up, I'm presenting the schedule of values to you tonight. You all got a copy of them. They will be available effective tomorrow for public inspection at my office, the county manager's office, the county library. And as of this afternoon, it was placed on the county website for those that want to have an electronic or be able to view it online. So in closing, what I'm requesting of you tonight is to set a public hearing for public input on the schedule of values at your next meeting, September 17, 2024. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Sherri. Board, do we have any questions?
Well, nobody likes to talk about taxes, but you know, we don't have any choice, and states left us no, no choice but to have a reappraisal. So I would make the motion that we approve.
I'll second.
So be clear, we're approving. Your motion to approve the public hearing.
Public hearing.
And that's your second.
Yes.
So with that, we have a motion, second, to authorize the public hearing as requested by the Tax Office of September 17, 2024, at 6:00 PM here in the Commissioners' chambers. With that, all the favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. So we'll get that scheduled properly notified. Next, we have one board appointment tonight. This is the Boiling Springs Planning and Adjustment Board. This is an ETJ position, which means they're a county citizen.
Yes, sir. You have the list of applicants at front of you. You will need to appoint one person to serve a three-year term ending June 30, 2027. As the chairman said, this person has been vetted. They do live in the Boiling Springs ETJ, and they have been vetted and recommended for appointment.
I'd like a motion that we appoint Catherine Hamburg to the Boiling Springs Planning and Adjustment.
I'll second that. All the motion, we have a motion, second, for the name stated. All the favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? Let me clean up what I said. All, all, all these are county, so even Boiling Springs citizens are county residents. I meant someone that lived in an unincorporated area.
Gotcha. Understood.
All right. Next, we have a closed session. So in pursuit of North Carolina General Statute 14331811A6 to consider qualifications, competency, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial performance of an image of public office or employee or prospective public officer or employee, that's the reason for the closed session. With that, do we have a motion to enter into closed session?
Sir, moved.
Okay. Second.
John John.
All the favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? All right. That motion carries unanimous. The board's.
Yes.
All right, so please let the record show the board is back now in open session. And during closed session we consulted with staff and no actions taken. At this time, commissioners, anybody anything to report? All right, if not, then before we adjourn, let me make a comment. The next meeting of the Clinton County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, September 17, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. here in the Commissioner's chambers. With that, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Have a motion second to adjourn. All in favor will say aye. If you want to oppose. All right, thank you very much, Steph.